To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for wicked sins, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everyone could take a minute, make sure their cellphones are silenced.
All right. We have a new, oh, this is a very crisp microphone. We have a new agenda that we're using, so bear with me if I stumble through anything. You have to hit the camera at the bottom. So, item B, making motion to accept the agenda as prepared.
Motion to amend the agenda to remove the first executive session.
Just for everyone, this is a brand-new piece on our board agenda. Just in case there needs to be an executive session at the beginning of the meeting, what was recommended to us was to use that sparingly because the public would be waiting and to only use it for items that pertain to the regular agenda. And so, there is nothing that pertains to anything you have to vote on today.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Okay, so we're past the executive session, so now we're on to item 3A. This is Mrs. Shays' theater writing movement workshop.
That they were going to be starting a junior high theater program, and so I entered my sixth grade classes into their program and we got accepted. And what that entailed was some introduction work with Shays', and then Shays' teaching artists came out and did nine workshops with my sixth graders. Each of them were ninety minutes long. They were in acting, writing, movement, and character development. And it culminated at the end with us being able to go to Shays' to see Fiddler on the Roof for free. And the best thing was Shays' paid for the entire thing. It did not cost the district a single cent. So, I just basically explained how we got there. So, my first student, Catherine Foltz, she's going to come up and briefly give her impressions about what she experienced.
We had three ladies come and teach us things. Some of these things were dancing, letting us be statues, and a writing workshop. We had to copy the dance moves the ladies were telling us to do. What I liked most about it was that it involved dance. That was my favorite. The themes that they focused on were writing, dancing, and letting us be statues.
All right. Next, we've got Van, and Van Wilson, he got really into the writing portion of the program, so I asked him to just give a couple of sentences about his impression of the writing.
Working with Shays' was a new experience, and it was fun and relaxing. We got to express ourselves. We had to write about pictures and what they see from their view. We listened to some music about their traditions, and we looked at the videos and wrote what we saw. This is related to Fiddler on the Roof because we had to write about our traditions, and Fiddler on the Roof is about traditions.
All right. Leila's going to talk about the dancing. That was her favorite.
We learned about traditional folk dancing. Ms. Joy showed us step by step how to do it. It was very fun and was cool to learn about folk dancing.
He's brief, to the point. So, after the nine workshops were completed, and each of the kids learned about the traditions that were covered in Fiddler on the Roof, they did character development, they learned about the characters, they learned about the history of the Russian Jews being forced out of Russia, and they got to watch the video and go through the character development. Then, we were all shipped over to Shays', and we got to see Fiddler on the Roof and draw all those connections that the kids learned from in the workshops. And so, Andre's going to talk about our experience at Shays'.
The Fiddler on the Roof play was amazing. It was all about tradition. I mean, I've seen things with tradition, but this was different. Every action was linked to tradition. Even the dances were linked to tradition. I really liked the show because it added some American guide to come to this land. It didn't have these traditions. It was real awesome to see the show. I loved theater, and it meant a lot to me that Shays' gave us the tickets. In fact, I'm in a musical theater class currently.
Okay, quickly, before I end, because this is fast, I just wanted to show you some of the pictures. So, this first one that we have is the opening stage on Fiddler on the Roof. This was our view from the stage where Tevye, the fiddler, comes out on the chair and speaks. Okay? This was the first overview of the acting, and the writing, and the movement workshops. Tried to get some videos, but sixth graders moved very fast, so it didn't work out that well. But as you can see, they were pretty engaged, and they were enjoying it. This was when we had Ms. Joy in, and Ms. Joy is a permanent teaching artist at Shays', and so she came in and taught the kids in three different workshops, six different folk dances that were all American folk dances, but they were related to traditions. This was when we had the kids using the screen in the chorus room, and they uploaded pictures of characters and traditional pictures of artwork, and the kids had to describe what they saw, what they thought the characters were doing, what the character's next action would be. The acting workshop, this was one of the ones they liked the best, where they got to improv and kind of make up their own stuff. And this is where they had to decide if they were going to portray a chore that they did at home, or a tradition that their family has. And they also brought in something that represented a tradition at their home. So, some kids brought in, for example, like the little water lamb kind of thing for Easter. Some kids brought in a picture, some kids brought in some sort of holiday tradition. And this is us, as much of I could get of them, at Shays' up in the balcony. We took thirty-seven sixth graders with us. Three high school kids came to help chaperone. Two of their parents came, and three of the sixth grade teachers. So, starting the week after their chorus concert, Thunby Duncan, who's the head of the education program at Shays', will come in and interview a small group of the kids to get their impressions and their feedback, any suggestions that they might have for improvement, too. So, that kind of culminates the whole experience for the kids. Thank you.
Great job presenting, too. Thanks for coming out. Moving on to item 3B. This is a presentation from Mrs. LaRosa from the Eden Elementary.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight one of the great things happening here at Eden Elementary School. I'm Kelly LaRosa, the principal, and this is Jacqueline Bonfanti, fourth grade special education teacher. In the seventeen-eighteen school year, grades K through five implemented a personalized reading system called ERLA. ERLA stands for Independent Reading Level Assessment, but it's much more than just an assessment. It's a personalized framework that creates a true reading culture across the school, and we want to tell you about the changes that we are seeing. The system is based on Richard Allington's research, finding that students need to read sixty minutes per day at their independent reading level in order to keep growing as a reader, and that's pretty staggering when we think about it. The framework begins by having teachers identify each student's base reading level, and then students are matched to appropriate text level to make sure they're reading text at their independently reading level. The teacher identifies a skill or standard that is most crucial for movement and growth to continue within that student. The teacher designs individual, small group, and whole group targeted instruction, monitors progress of every student in the class, and then repeats the cycle. So, that's kind of the foundation of the system. Within this, students read thirty minutes a day at school, and the system incorporates many facets of personalized learning, including using data, not only on the part of the teacher, but on the part of the student, because they're tracking their steps and they're monitoring their progress towards their goal. They provide targeted instruction. ERLA incorporates choice because students are able to pick the books that they would like to read at their reading level. Students are empowered, and they monitor and reflect on their progress. They have a power goal, so all the students know their power reading goal that is tied to our standards. It incorporates technology. Students are able to read on their Chromebooks. We have an electronic bookshelf where they can select books at their reading level in addition to the books we have and hard copies. And most importantly, it celebrates and recognizes the students' hard work as they achieve their goals and work through their levels.
So, we included this visual so that you can see the progression that the students move through. So, at the bottom of the pyramid you'd see where they're at the pre-K level, where they're using active reading strategies, you know, tracking a text, using picture clues to predict what the words might be, then moving into learning their different consonant sounds, and then focusing, then they move to the green level where they are learning about high-frequency words, or what you might know of as sight words. Then, building on that, blends, digraphs, one-syllable words, two-syllable words, then multi-syllabic words. And as they progress, then they're looking at vocabulary development. So, this is the progression of steps and of colors from the pre-K level all the way up to the high school level, but we currently use it at GLP and here.
So, not only are they working on their reading skills in school, but it also bridges this to home. So, they have thirty minutes of assigned independent reading level, reading at home daily, and they track that. They get one step for every fifteen minutes of reading, and they collect that data, and it's recognized every hundred steps that they reach. And like I said earlier, they can also use that bookshelf application at home. And we're going to move on.
So, ERLA, we have really fostered the school-wide community of reading. And so, if you walk around our building, you'll see different displays in the hallway of us celebrating our kids' accomplishments with their steps. So, like Mrs. LaRosa said, for every fifteen minutes that they read, they get one step. So, you'll see in the first photo, there's a mountain. So, in fourth grade, we climb Mount ERLA through the year. And when a student reaches fifty steps, they enter the mountain with their little boot. And then, they progress to a hundred, then a hundred and fifty, and two hundred. So, that's what we do in fourth grade. We, all four homerooms, do it together. And then, in the other two photos, you'll see what two different fifth-grade classrooms do, still celebrating the kids' accomplishments. In some classrooms, they have like little fun days during their ERLA time. So, in the first photo, you'll notice that they are making forts and reading underneath their forts. In a later photo, you'll see that students are reading in the dark with flashlights. So, several classrooms tried that out, especially around Halloween time. It was very motivational and exciting for the students. In addition, when a student reaches one hundred steps, their name is on the announcements, and they earn the Eden Elementary lanyard, which you'll see in the end photo that Mrs. Weber is passing out to the students in the office. The students are so excited when they get that name on the announcements, and they get to come down, and they get to wear their lanyard all around school. They're very proud of that. And then, when they get to two hundred steps, their name is said again, and then they start earning these keychains. Some of them make noises. So, they really love that recognition. And when Mrs. Weber, when she's done recognizing the students and their accomplishments, she does a little cheer with them. So, we thought it would be fun to share that cheer, and let's hope it works.
So, that happens daily in my office, some with a small crowd, some with a very large crowd, but it's a very fun way to start the day.
We also asked the students, "Well, what do you think about ERLA?" So, we gave them, "I like ERLA because," and I gathered like a hundred little slips of paper that said why they like ERLA. And as I was reading them, I was seeing very common things, themes, repeated in them. And here were a few that stood out. "I like ERLA because when you read a book, it is like you go on an adventure. There are so many kinds of books to read." Another one said, "I like ERLA because you can learn new things and grow your brain, and you can learn new words," so that growth mindset idea. Also, "I like ERLA because it is so quiet." Also, "I like it because we have different places to sit at." So, in some classrooms, they have, we have beanbags, or the carpet, or they really like to move around to find their cozy spot to read, just like they do at home. "I like ERLA because you can get good information. It can be interesting, and after, you can be calm when you are done reading." So, you have that time, your relaxation time, and I know we can all relate to that when we're reading at home as well. Lastly, like Mrs. LaRosa mentioned, students are working towards power goals. So, at their different levels, there's different things that they need to master in order to move up. So, a few students, I videoed them sharing with you their power goal. They might be a little tricky, too, here. Can we, can the video be posted up there so that it can be heard, or no? So, that student is working on moving from a white level to a black level. So, in order to do that, they have to read a black level book and be able to explain to us, summarize it, and tell us what that book is about. So, this student is at a level where he is getting used to reading a chapter book series, so really getting engaged in that series, and he was on his fifth one in that same series. He does. He's at like two hundred steps already now. So, those students are reading a book together. They're doing a partner read. Mrs. LaRosa, I wanted to talk about some data.
So, as you can hear from our students, they really like the system. It's very motivating on many different levels. We've always been tracking reading progress, but this is a system that allows all the teachers to speak the same language. And obviously, you have different level readers in every classroom, and it helps not only the teacher, but the students go really deep into their understanding and the necessary skills and comprehension levels in each level before they're moved on too quickly. So, we have, I have just a little bit of data to share from you last year, because the teachers enter everything in school pace as they work with students. Last year, after our initial training and working with the coach, we got pretty much everyone in the system at the beginning of November. So, from the beginning of November last year until June, it showed that sixty-nine percent of the students in our building were highly engaged in reading. At the beginning of that time, in third grade, we had forty-eight students who were at risk in their reading ability. We ended the year with three at risk. In fourth grade, we started with forty at risk. We ended the year with ten at risk. And in fifth grade, we started with twenty at risk, and we ended with ten at risk. So, overall, seventy-five percent of the building was at or above their reading level, which is absolutely phenomenal. So, we are looking for even better success this year. I'm so proud of the teachers and the students for all their hard work. So, thank you.
Items 3C, unveiling reserves.
I'm needy, so Lucinda's going to help me. So, we appreciate everyone's patience as we try to work out this new system. I think I'm going to start to talk and just refer everyone that once Lucinda can catch up, we can get it all together. I appreciate that Lucinda's helping me because I am technologically challenged. So, each year about this time, last year, we started and we adopted the district's first reserve plan. So, moving forward, every year, I want to start off with a three-tiered approach. Tier number one is to kind of talk about from five thousand foot what the reserve plans are, what we have, how they're utilized. Then, at the next board meeting, after I go over it with the Audit Finance Committee, I will have a reserve plan that will presented, get feedback from the board members, and then hopefully in January, we'll have one ready for adoption. So, our planned discussion is to talk about what is long-term financial planning, what are our current reserves, what reserves we need to facilitate our long-term financial planning, and the process utilized for developing a reserve plan. The long-term financial planning definition is an investment plan or strategy with a term of longer than one year. A long-term financial plan involves more uncertainty than anything short-term, typically because market trends are more easily predictable in the short term. We have an extra caveat in school districts, and that is the political aspect that we have to deal with when it comes to the budget and the governor's budget and state aid funding. So, then, our long-term financial planning works best as part of an overall strategic plan. Financial forecasting is the process of projecting revenues and expenditures over a long-term period using assumptions about economic conditions, future spending scenarios, and other salient variables. The reason, overview for the reason for reserves. You want to have savings for fiscal stability. It allows the district to sustain programming during periods of economic decline. It offsets the local share of many major purchases. Those include buses, capital, improvements, technology, et cetera. And it improves our bond rating because when we're looked at by standards and pores or Moody's, they're saying that we're not just having knee-jerk reactions, we're actually planning to be able to manage our finances. So, the purpose of the existing reserves is to save for future planned expenditures. We currently have reserves for these following planned expenditures. We have a capital reserve for building. That allows us to reduce the impact to the taxes when we need to do capital improvements, such as the current 2020 project. When we need to buy maintenance equipment and buses, which we need to keep our bus fleet in good shape so our students are having safe trips to and from school. We have an employee benefit accrued liability and a retirement contribution. And when you think of a retirement contribution in a school district, you would think that would include everyone. But the state statute only allows us to save for the employees' retirement system, which in our case is only our support staff. So, our biggest expenditure is our teaching staff, which is as it should be, but we have no avenue to save for future retirement costs for those people. So, some unplanned expenditures that we try to save for are unemployment insurance reserve. Should we by any chance have to have a staffing cut and pay for unemployment? We do not operate like a typical business. A typical business pays a percentage of all of their salaries every year in order to pay for their unemployment. But in school districts, because we're government, we are able to do that. We pay for that. A hundred percent of the cost is borne by the district. So, then, we have a repair reserve, and our current repair reserve is utilized to pay for the COGEN operation and keeping that up to date. And then, we have a liability reserve that was planned last year, and that's for items that are not covered by insurance. I'm going to move on. So, we're going to talk about current reserves available to aid in budgeting. They require board authorization to utilize these reserves. The unemployment insurance reserve, which is set up to cover the cost of reimbursement for New York State unemployment expenses. We have a workers' compensation reserve. And again, we're a little different than a typical business. A business would subscribe to something along the lines of an insurance company of the state insurance fund. But the Eden school district belongs to a healthcare workers' consortium of other school districts, so we pay a hundred percent of our workers' compensation expenses. So, we're allowed to set up a reserve to save money for that in the future. We have the liability reserve, again, which is to cover costs for the district that we are not aware of and that are not covered by insurance. For example, should a lawsuit exceed our insurance amount, we would be able to pull funds from that instead of raising the tax cap to immediately raise taxes. Excuse me. Current reserves available to aid in budgeting, they require board authorization to utilize. We have a retirement contribution reserve, which, again, covers the cost. Every year, we pay a percentage of salaries to the employee retirement system for our support staff contribution, and we can set aside funds to pay for that in the future. We have the employee accrued benefit liability, and that pays for accrued benefits due to employees upon separation. Accrued benefits is for vacation and sick leave that are contractually, the district is obligated to give to staff members upon retirement or leaving of the district. So, for the May referendum, I would like to propose, in conversation, and get the conversation and the thought out there, I would like to propose a capital reserve for technology. The purpose of this reserve would be to pay for technology replacement of items purchased via the Smart Schools Bond Act, which we were... via the Smart Schools Bond Act, which we were fortunate to get $958,000 in Smart Schools Bond money allocated to our district. But we were not allowed to use the money from that bond act to replace anything we would buy. So if we just went out without thinking in the future, back to our long-range planning, we would have $958,000 of new technology we would have no way to replace other than to raise taxes. So if we would have a capital reserve for technology, we could start to set aside money in the future to replace those items that realistically have a three-to-five-year lifecycle. That reserve would require voter authorization to create, and it would require voter authorization to utilize the funds. Process for maintaining, oh, I have a, in a formal reserve plan. You review the current reserve plan. That is done by the superintendent, myself, and the Audit Committee. Then I would, my job as Director of Finance is to propose new reserves. The Board of Education authorizes new reserves via either board approval, if that's all there's required, or voter authorization. I cannot add a proposition without board approval to the May referendum for a technology reserve. And then adopting the reserve plan, which the goal of this Board of Education is to do that in January. Any questions?
So what I asked Laura was to back up one, Lucinda. And you got there. Perfect. So can you just go over that again, just in the scenario of timing for this year? Because that's what you were describing, but now that everybody can see it up on the big screen, I think it would be easier.
Well, I've already met once in this fall with the Audit Committee Reserve, the Audit Finance Committee, and I've looked at the current reserve plan. I've had conversation with the Superintendent, Mrs. Anzalone, about what new reserves we might need, what are the status of our reserves. Then I proposed tonight, it's the first time I've officially proposed, adding a new reserve for technology. That would be a capital reserve for technology, and that would require voter authorization on the May referendum. And if approved, it would also require voter authorization to utilize any of the funds. So if it were to pass, the board would allow me the opportunity to put it on the referendum. It would be a 10-year reserve. That means for 10 years, I can put any budgetary savings into that reserve. If at year 11, there's money still left in it, I can utilize the money. I just can't place any more reserves in there.
So what I think I heard you say is that the board needs to approve that before it goes on a referendum?
Correct.
So that means that if in fact we were to propose in a board agenda that there be this on the May referendum, it would have to be prior to that May board meeting?
Correct. It would be part of the budgetary process. And what I would be doing is asking for your preliminary approval as part of the reserve plan that you adopt in January. It would be listed as a proposed reserve, and then we would get to the specific language from the legal attorneys on how to put it through the board agenda. And then if all was said and done in January, with whatever adjustments are made at the November board meeting, I would have a reserve plan ready to be adopted in January. Any other questions?
Do you have an idea now of what dollar amount you'd want that reserve to be?
I would like to, I have an idea. Typically, we have, right now, I'm thinking along the lines of $6 million, but I really need to sit down with Mrs. Karstedt and come up with what she would actually need because I want to make sure that I'm not just looking at it with an accountant's eye and that I'm looking at it with the person who's got to maintain the items that we're trying to be able to replace.
Any other questions?
Moving on to Section 4, Item A. This is a request to withdraw specific items from the consent agenda items. Then Item B is the approval of the consent agenda items. The recommended action is, upon the recommendation of the superintendent consensus, consensus items A through T be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion?
What I, what I just want to state, it actually isn't about that resolution, but it's for people that are looking on the screen. So what this new software allows you to do, can you see that little icon of the document to the right? So if you were on your own computer, you would be able to now plug into the supporting documents for every single one of these letters. That was something that was brought to us by a member of the audience a few meetings ago, Mr. Loretto, and so we're really pleased, and I'm really glad that we can share that opportunity with you instead of trying to figure out 500 pages of which one applies to what.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
This is Item 5, the public comments portion. This is the time that the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements and respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit. Okay, moving on to new business. Item A. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of teacher aide Amanda Chimera be accepted effective November 5th, 2018. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Chimera for her two years of service to the district.
Second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item B. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of custodian Joseph Buzyak be accepted effective December 20th, 2018. The board and administration wish to thank Mr. Buzyak for his 14 and 1/2 years of service to the district.
Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item C. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of cleaner Darren Azarelbe conditionally accepted effective December 20th, 2018, dependent upon his appointment to the laboral position.
Second. Questions or comments?
So this position would put Darren in as the replacement for Mr. Cornell, Randy Cornell, who retired last month.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item 7, new business appointments. All appointments will not be effective in service to the district pursuant to, there to shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory reenter provisions for fingerprinting certification and clearance for employment. Now put us up on the board. Okay. Item B. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Hannah Mardino be appointed as a morning program aide effective October 18th, 2018. Salary is $17.50 per hour.
Second. Questions or comments?
So what this would allow is for there to always be two morning program adults supervising our students prior to the beginning of the school day?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item C. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Darren Azarelbe appointed on probation as a laborer effective December 20th, 2018, and ending June 19th, 2018. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level five, step one.
Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item D. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Andrea Sezniak, who is initially certified in Students with Disabilities 7 through 12 generalists, is hereby appointed in the special education tenure area for a probationary period commencing November 1st, 2018 and ending October 31st, 2022. Unless extended in accordance with the law, salary is based upon ETA contract master step one.
Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item E. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, David Schmidt, who is professionally certified in physical education and health, is hereby appointed as an extended leave substitute physical education teacher effective approximately November 7th, 2018 through January 2nd, 2019. Salary is $95 per day.
Questions or, questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
And Item F. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Frances McKay be appointed on probation as a bus attendant effective November 1st, 2018 through April 30th, 2019. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Moving on to new business. Item A, transportation rates. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following rates be set for outside organizations or other non-traditional transportation routes for the 2018-19 school year. Bus driver $38.99 per hour, bus attendant $32.92 per hour, and mileage rate $0.86 a mile.
Second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item B. Amendment to the 2018-19 school calendar. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2018-19 school calendar be amended to change June 3rd, 2019 to a full day of school for all students.
Second. Questions or comments?
Sorry to our students sitting in the back of the auditorium. So June, he's shaking his head at me. I can't see who it is, but I see the head. So June 3rd can be designated by the state of New York as a regents day because the new global exam is being administered on that day. Eden is not administering that exam, and so therefore it's coming back as a recommendation for a full day of school for seven, six through 12.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item C, the CSEA contract. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Civil Service Employees Association, CSEA, contract effect of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021 be approved.
Second. Questions or comments?
I'd like to comment that this is strictly, I don't know, that is, okay, I'd like to comment that this is strictly an extension and not an entirely brand-new contract.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item D. Approve addition of positions. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following positions be created and added to the civil service inventory list. Special education one-to-one teacher aide, part-time clerk typist, 12-month with possible variable reduced summer hours, and a cleaner.
Second. Questions or comments?
So just to remind everyone, including me at the table, is that civil service does not allow us to approve a person unless we actually have a slot. And so what this is, is opening up three slots that civil services that we can have so that you can then go ahead and make, we can make recommendations for a person to fill those slots. The teacher aide is self-explanatory. The part-time clerk typist would be a second, 12-month, 19.5-hour clerk typist at GLP, and the cleaner is the additional cleaner position that we spoke about a month or two ago.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item A, minimum wage, or Item E, sorry, minimum wage increase. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the New York State minimum wage increase to $11.10 per hour be approved effective December 31st, 2018.
Second. Questions or comments?
In its infinite wisdom, the minimum wage increase doesn't come on January 1st, it comes on December 31st. So that's the reason for it saying December 31st and not a more normalized period that you would expect.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item F. Banned overnight trip. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the overnight ban trip to New York City from April 5th, 2019 to April 7th, 2019 be approved.
Second. Questions or comments?
I just want to thank the teachers for paying attention to the new board policy on these overnight trips. When there are changes, you're aware of them. I'm aware of them, and I think it's just put us all at ease to know which students are going, when they're going, when they're coming back. And so it was a really good addition, and I know it's a lot of extra work for them, but they've been really, really great about it.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item 9A, the business report.
So I'd like to start out with some transportation updates, and the main update that I have for you is we are working on the GPS system for, I believe it's called My School Bus. And what is going on is last week was supposed to be a training on Thursday, and we didn't have a snow day, but the vendor did. Now there's one for Eden. And so they went on with Friday's training, which is kind of like reading the second chapter of a how-to book before you read the first chapter. So they keep working forward, and the hope is that they will be to a point by the December board meeting that maybe Mrs. Banko can come and talk a little bit about where we are in this process because we're really trying to get it rolled out before Mother Nature just decides to descend upon us here in Eden.
So in conversation with Mrs. Banko too, she's going to pilot it with some internal people, just to make sure it's functioning the way it should be so that we're not stating that someone's bus is headed to South Carolina.
Okay. Yeah, we, we want to improve communication, not give people a heart attack. Then for the buildings and grounds update, I'd just like to thank Mr. Martin and his staff over at the high school. They've been painting the old weight room. They're getting that ready. It should be ready by the end of the semester, and I believe we have some repurposed use of that, possibly some testing, and then maybe some wrestling mats will get added after that, and physical education. So there's a lot going on in that room, and his staff is working really hard to get it painted so it looks nice, new, and fresh. And then I will be having a proposal to the Board of Education. Most people in education are aware that we have a substitute crisis. There's not enough teachers to substitute when someone takes off. There's not enough aides, there are not enough bus drivers. So what I would like to do is do a proposal in December for the Board of Education to coincide with the raise of the minimum wage. So on December 31st, we could adopt some new substitute rates, and then maybe we could have a methodology where instead of them staying stagnant for years in an end, we would start to look at when and how often to run them forward so that we could have people wanting to come to Eden who live in Eden because it makes more sense to work here than it does in a neighboring district, which is further commute for them.
So if the board can figure this out on the new software under the executive panel, you can actually see the proposal from Laura, or if you pull it up and actually state it so that everybody in this room can hear what it is. There's one or two items that we haven't ironed out yet. You'll probably notice which ones we're not. This is, this is a really good time. It's been a conversation point for a number of years, and I'm really grateful for Laura for trying to, trying to get this up here. Do you want to look on mine?
I'm, I'm not on for some reason. Let's go back to Mother Nature, what she gave me to look at. So what I'm looking at is proposing that a substitute monitor would be paid a little bit more than minimum wage. That being the point that anyone can go and get a job. bit more than minimum wage, that being the point that anyone can go and get a job at the local surefire for the minimum wage, but we want people to want to come here and work with our kids, and we want to reward the people that are coming here. So I'm going to propose a slightly above the minimum wages, the twelve dollars an hour above that. The same for cleaner, from ten forty to twelve, but it would actually be, eleven-ten would be what we're mandated to pay on December thirty-first, so that would go to twelve dollars an hour. Your monitor, your cleaner, your bus attendant, your laborer, your teacher aide, your clerk typist. Now we're going to talk about our bus drivers. I need to think, ask the board to think about the fact of the awesome responsibility we place in the hands of a substitute bus driver. They have to be nineteen A certified, they have to pay for the CDL license, and then they come and they drive our most precious commodity in this community, to and from school every day, thousands of miles, with nearly, hardly ever an incident, and very few, if ever, any injuries that occur on the buses. They have to maintain, if you will, comparative to a potential of a teacher maintaining sixty students in a classroom. Not only do they have to maintain that, they have to watch everyone else on the road. So currently, they're getting fourteen sixty an hour, or thirteen twenty-three an hour, and I want to move them up to sixteen fifty an hour. And that is comparable to what they were getting higher than minimum wage back before the minimum wage increase has started, and they stayed stagnant as a way to be able to keep everything else running in the district. The nurse, they would go from
Fourteen sixty?
Fourteen sixty, I'm sorry, I'm really getting blind, to sixteen fifty an hour, because the nurse's responsibility would can be comparative in a different setting and manner to the bus driver. And then the teaching subs would be, technology substitutes, we would move them up to the twelve dollars an hour, the same as the cleaners, the laborers, because we wouldn't really want to keep anyone at minimum wage, because we would want these students that are in school to say, hey, you know what, I can be furthering my education while I'm out there doing this for the district. Right, I would like to add a new step for our substitute teachers. Now, I haven't talked about the extended substitutes, and because quite frankly, it didn't hit my radar screen until while I'm on vacation today. So I'm still going to be coming back with a proposal before I ask you to adopt any of the rates. But what I have said is we should have a non-certified teacher, a certified teacher, and then a lot of districts entertain the idea of a retired certified teacher. Sub. And that substitute is a retired Eden teacher, because that person knows how Eden works, they know how the students are, they can walk in, and it's a more seamless transition. And I think we would do better having people who know our students coming back here to substitute teach for our students. So we would look at
Uncertified from seventy to ninety.
An uncertified goes from seventy-five to ninety, a certified goes from eighty-five to a hundred, and the retired certified Eden substitute, the new one, would go from eighty-five to a hundred and fifteen. They would get a fifteen dollar and a day bonus for knowing our students and how our system works. So that's what I will be proposing on the agenda for November, so that gives, or December, I'm sorry. It's terrible when you're off for the day. So that would be the goal and where we would be heading for you to approve at the next board meeting. So as Laura mentioned earlier, you're going to also go and do some research on the extended sub. An extended sub is somebody who works from twenty-five to, or twenty-one to ninety days. And then also, there are a few other items that I've been in conversation with other teachers on that I'll bring to you this month that you can, you can also talk about in December. Okay.
So how does this compare to other districts, and do you think this is going to solve the problem? Because quite honestly, we're at full employment as the Northeast, and if, if I could sell employees right now, that's my number thing when I go out and see customers right now is they, they're looking for people. It's, we're at full employment, so I don't know if this is going to solve the problem, quite honestly.
So I've talked to other school districts, let's just take the retired teacher one. So I could look as close to us as Orchard Park. I mean, those, those rates for retired teachers at Orchard Park are not germane to just Orchard Park retired teachers, it's a different classification if they've actually been a teacher. It puts us in the ballpark with other school districts, and hopefully takes that variable out of it. People like to sub where they like to sub, but there are also other pieces to it that are important, when someone calls in that they need a sub. If you call in the day before or a week before, you're more likely to get that person than if in fact somebody decides that morning that they need a sub. Sometimes we don't know that we need a sub earlier, so that makes a difference, what time we call if it's that same morning. Some, some districts will state that they have to call it in before six AM. When I was in Grand Island, we had to call it in within an hour or two. Other districts are not that way at all. It won't solve the problem, because some people just don't want to sub, they just don't. But this at least gets our uncertified teachers up above minimum wage. We are, the southern tier does hire uncertified subs, we can only hire them for forty days though, per New York State regulation, but right now with the rates that we're paying at seventy-five dollars an hour, they can go make more at Tim Hortons than they can by coming in here and taking on the responsibility of being a substitute teacher. We're hoping that it will help some, and then we'll reassess. But throwing money at it is not the only issue, I totally agree with you. Also, not just the teachers, but we do believe that in the CSEA realm, which would be our support staff, that throwing money at that one, we are hoping that that will make a difference. And right now, we're one of the lowest payers for substitute bus drivers. We have a huge, huge list of substitute bus drivers, one. So we are at a crisis mode, so we have to do something to get our substitute bus driver rates up there. We have individuals that live in Eden that we know are substitute bus drivers that are going to other districts because they're paying more, this gets us closer to that realm. And the problem with, with all of this is, and today is SRP recognition day, so if you're out here and you're support staff, we are really grateful that you're here, is, is that interestingly enough, you can run school without me here for a day, but you can't be short of bus driver for a day. And so Mary Banco will drive, Donnie Preuschel will drive. We're also looking to see if there are other people in our district that can carry two positions, one of them is a sub, Laura's looking into that with our attorney. So for example, maybe somebody who is a laborer or a custodian would also like to be a substitute bus driver, so we're checking into that as well. So again, I'm hoping to bring you, well, I will be bringing you the finalized rates where we think we should be. I will be looking for some feedback as you look through over the next week or two, and let me know backwards and say, you know, I think maybe this number should be more of this, because I know sometimes you like to, you know, look and think about it, and then we could move forward. So then the last thing I wanted to bring up is the budget calendar. And one of the things that I did last year in my first year was, we had a budget workshop in the, before the December board meeting. Well, having learned the differences between my old district and the new district, it would be a more cohesive event to have that in January, instead of doing it in December, then we wait a whole month because we have the holidays. And that way, people won't have so much on their plate, hopefully, and they'll come and join us. And so the January thirteenth board meeting, I believe is the date, and that's when I'd like to roll out at six fifteen, a budget workshop, just begin to talk about a rollover budget, to begin to show what our goals and objectives and needs will be based on, what I like to do is trend forward the things that I know, and leave all the revenues flat and pretend that we can't raise an extra cent, so that we can see what we have to look at, where we may have to have additions and deletions to start to make things fit, so that when the governor gives us his proposal at the end of January, we can look at that. And Mrs. Anne Sloan and I will be sending out some proposed dates in the next week or so, so that everybody can look and say, yes, we can do that date, or no, we need to pick a different date, so we can work for it at the board's convenience. So the hope for January thirteenth is that the community would come forward to tell us what they're looking for in this budget before the, before the May vote, as opposed to after the May vote? Correct, because right now, it's a lot of estimates and number crunching, but without the community coming and telling what that you feel that the district needs to be doing, it's kind of hard to give the community what they're looking for.
Okay. Item B, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Jen. So I'd like to start by just talking about the Eden Community Foundation event that was held on November seventh at GLP. This idea was brought to me by Linda Meyer and Terry Zittle for us to actually hope, host that donor thank you event for Eden Community Foundation at GLP, and to be able to show off a number of things at GLP. First, the capital project renovations, including the new secure entrance in the main office, but secondary to that is to have them see the kindergarten classrooms and other classrooms at GLP, so that they could understand what learning looks like at pre-K through two. It was a fascinating event for me. We did have some participants in that program who are donors to the Eden Community Foundation that did not realize that GLP was still a school. So I thought that this was awesome to be able to bring them there. Of course, those that went to school or graduated forty, fifty years ago are just blown away by what a classroom looks like now. And at GLP, we cover up the, the fluorescent lights for our students who have migraines or who would be prone to seizures. We have variable seating, flexible seating, as Jaclyn mentioned earlier today, and you could just really see when you walk into a classroom that it looks very different than the rows and rows of, of desks and chairs that perhaps they went to school at. Lauren gave tours to everybody across the district, showed them the new group bathroom, showed them how the new badging works for, for guests that come into the district, and hugged at least one or two of her new doors, because that's the favorite part to her, is her new doors. And so it, it was a wonderful, wonderful event, and I'm really grateful to Eden Community Foundation that they allowed us to do that at GLP. This kicks off some of our tours for our community. We're closing out our capital project now, Laura, I'm going to ask you to just jump in on that briefly in one second, but basically what that means is we're closing out phase three. And once we close that out, then we can no longer go and ask the contractors to fix something, because that contract is considered closed. So we, we are at a point where that almost, that twenty-two million dollar capital project is complete, and so we will start to offer tours in some of the other buildings. GLP is the one with the most academic renovation, and so we wanted to start there. We do still, though, have a capital project phase four with the monies that we didn't spend that were approved by the voters, and so we're really excited to be, be able to put back in the public address system or the PA system, which is on its last leg and doesn't work well, clocks and visual alerts. So what we had mentioned to you three, four years ago, is that we were hoping to put strobe lights on top of our buildings, so that if you're a traveling teacher or a parent, you would be able to see that we are in a lockdown or some other emergency within the building and not come to the building. Included in that also are new integrated clocks in all of our primary instructional spaces. We're maintaining the analog clocks like you have here in the auditoriums, that we can continue to teach our students how to tell time, not on a digital clock. The other areas will have a digital clock, because it's at least two hundred dollars cheaper for a digital clock than an analog clock, and attached to those digital clocks will be new speakers attached to our PA, the ability to have a scrolling alert if in fact we needed to give a digital alert within all of our classrooms, and also to have PA systems outside and PA systems in hallways that also give that digital alert, and also have an amber green or red or a different color if we choose blinking light. And so, you know, we are in that age when we want to be able to give fast instructions to people. If in fact we get good bids on this in the spring, once it comes back approved by state education department, our hope is that this system will be completely and fully integrated off our phone systems, so that if I pick up the phone, if Jaclyn picks up the phone, if any, any teacher or cleaner picks up the phone and says, we're in a lockdown, the entire district can go into a lockdown off of that one phone call. And we cannot do that now. In your board documents, and I will push this out for the public to see, what we've given to state education department are the actual illustrations of what those, of what that hardware looks like. We're also looking into a lightning detention monitoring system, we've been doing some research on some other districts. This would not come out of phase four, so it's really not part of the capital project, but it's really difficult in Eden sometimes to tell that there is lightning or thunder close by or to hear it, just because of the mountains, but we know that it's occurring. And so we want to make sure our students are safe on any field that they happen to be in, so we're also looking at that. So can, Laura, can you just jump in on that closeout? So we're in a phase now for phase three, and what we're trying to do is close it out. So what we're saying is the contractors are going to finish their work, and where, there's some items that, let's face it, they may not be perfect, they will go into a warranty phase. So some items have already been in a warranty phase. For example, our concession stand has already been in a warranty phase for over a year, and so it's now out of warranty. But we would have a one-year warranty phase for a lot of the items that are being completed now for phase three, just like we did this summer for Fain. Correct. So if something goes wrong and it's a manufacturer defect, we would be able to be covered, but if it's something that the contractor put in wrong, we can still place a call to them while we're in the warranty period. So it's not like we're just on our own and our maintenance guys have to fix something that wasn't done correctly. The biggest issue is trying to get all this paperwork to SED by December thirty-first, so we need that to be done, so that we secure our state aid for this year for the building aid. The problem is the timetables that SED has put out there make everything become a crunch period, and so we're working with our financial advisor, with our construction management campus, to make sure that we get everything done and hit our deadline for December thirty-first. And then the reason we have a phase four is because we were very lucky and fortunate in the bidding process, our construction management company and our architect, they had to estimate years in advance what it would cost to do things, and we were fortunate and blessed when we went out for our bids that they came in lower, that's where the extra money has come in for phase four. True, and we didn't have too many emergencies, we only found a few things like extra ceilings and such as we went along. And an abandoned septic tank. Yes. That's all I have.
Okay. This is item C, the board report and roundtable. Moving on, the next Board of Education meeting will be Wednesday, December nineteenth, 2018, at seven PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium.
So if we could just stay there for a moment, I think the sound is much, much better today, would you agree? Yeah, so thank you, Lucinda, for, I know you had that guy out here a number of different times. Also, if you noticed, the noise up above you is not there as much. We had the engineers and the mechanics out here also a number of times to try to put some baffles and attenuation up there. I don't know if they're finished yet, they might have one more to go for when the air conditioning is on, but it's an incredible improvement from last month, because I felt like I was in a washing machine for two days after the board meeting. So thank you.
And then item eleven A. No. Eleven B, okay. Executive session, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss ETA negotiations, a safety issue, the history of a particular person's, and proposed litigation.
Second.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
So if I could just remind all the board members, you have to log out of board docs or you will remain logged in. Paul figured that out earlier, right? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.